Good morning, everybody. We'll call to order our July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Sheriff Salisbury, would you mind leading us?
I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Moving on to item number three, roll call. The clerk, please take roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Item four point one, if the clerk would please report the correspondence.
The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Washington State Liquor Control Board Notice to Licenses on Fire Arms, Notice of Cannabis License Approval for PT Enterprises LLC, and Notice of Cannabis License Application for Washington Green Peak LLC. Virtual SiteWalk LLC sent in a request to lease land for SBA Communications Facility on twenty-one hundred East Johns Prairie Road. The Mason County Fire Chiefs Association sent in a request to allow emergency service agencies to independently charge impact fees for new development. Cheryl Platsmeyer sent in road paving suggestion for East Razor Road in Belfair. Ken Van Buskirk sent in an email regarding the Sweetwater Creek Park Project briefing and support letters from July eleven, twenty twenty-two. And Tamara Ingwoldson sent in an application for the area agency on aging advisory board.
Thank you. Item number four point two, we have a news release. Mason County Historic Preservation Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael McSims here. The Mason County Commissioners are seeking applicants to fill four open positions on the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The major responsibilities of the Historic Preservation Commission is to identify and actively encourage the conservation of Mason County's historic resources by initiating and maintaining a registry of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to registered properties. They also work to raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources and serve as Mason County's primary resource in matters of history, historic planning, and preservation. Commission members serve three-year terms and meet monthly during business hours at county offices in Shelton. During COVID, these meetings have been held via Zoom. There are currently four positions open. Applicants must be residents of Mason County. Interested persons are encouraged to apply for this commission by completing an advisory board form that can be downloaded at the Mason County website or by calling the Commissioner's office at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or three six zero two seven five four four six seven, extension four one nine. Completed applications should be submitted to the Commissioner's office at four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton. Positions are open until filled. If there are questions about these positions, please contact Michael McSims at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension five seven one, or by email at hpc@masoncountywa.gov. Thank you.
Next item, we have a news release for Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Panel.
Morning Commissioners. Mason County is seeking citizen volunteers to serve on the Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Panel, or TIPCAP. The TIPCAP reviews and analyzes Mason County's transportation needs and presents their proposed plan to the Board of County Commissioners. The time commitment includes a three-year membership period and attendance to one evening meeting each month, and the meetings last approximately two hours. The Board of County Commissioners will use the Transportation Improvement Plan developed by TIPCAP to plan road construction and other transportation projects for the next six years. Mason County invites all citizens to apply for a position with one of three Commissioner Districts. The intent is to form a team that represents a wide cross-section of Mason County's population. Interested persons may apply by attending or obtaining an application from the Mason County Commissioner's Office, four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton, or by calling three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or from the county website, www.masoncountywa.gov. Applications will be accepted until all vacancies are filled. And Commissioners, if I could just make a quickie clarification about TIPCAP and recommendations. The TIP, an annual construction program, is the role and responsibility of the county engineer. County engineer prepares that document, and Commissioners have created TIPCAP as a citizen body to present citizen perspective and recommendations to both staff and Commissioners on the citizen perspective on priorities. So I just wanted to be clear that that is all Mike's purview, wherever Mike is. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Loretta. Appreciate that. Moving on to item number five, this is our open forum for citizen input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on today's agenda. So if it's on the action agenda or has its own public hearing, you can save your comments for those items when they come up at that time. So this is for anything not on today's agenda. So we have about a three-minute-per-person time limit in order to allow as many people that would like to speak the opportunity. And so we'll begin with any folks in the room that have comment on items not on today's agenda. Steve.
Morning Commissioners. Steve Bloomfield. I live three ninety-one Southeast Dawn Road, down the south end of the county here. Two items. One is history, and one is future. I'm on a board with the Historic Society, have been for a number of years now, and I want to invite you, all of you, come on down to the museum, take a look at what we got. That goes for the whole world. Stop by Mason County Historic Society and take advantage of a repository of information. It's unbelievable. And the researching that can be done there, it surprises me for the size of our little community. Anyway, come on down, take a look. Thank you. The second thing is future. And as you probably know, I have sat for a number of years on the trucey board for Juvenile Court. I'm proud to do that. I'm happy to do that. There's been a couple of people that have really, really done an outstanding job and been there since the reformation of that board with the new law five, six, seven years ago. I can't remember. It's been that long. We have had some success in the past, and we've had some failure. And when we started out, we used to dedicate an hour, hour and twenty minutes, something like that, per child that come before us, listen to what the problem was, and diagnose what the problem is, try to find solutions and answers and help to get them to where they reestablish school. Over the years, that eroded time-wise, partly because of staffing issues with the court. Money is hard to come by. Time is important. The volunteers are willing to put in more time. When we started out, we, the volunteers, listened to the case totally, came to a decision on what should happen with the individual, and then pass that to the staff. They did their workup necessary thereafter the fact. Now there's a staff sitting in their room. So our times eroded to about twenty minutes per kid. We can't do it in twenty minutes. We can't do it in twenty days, really. The problems are too great. There's too many and too varied. We need help. We need help not only through more volunteers. We need more time for staff, which means more budget, of course. Sorry about that, but that's the facts of life. It's not the court's fault. It's not the staff's fault. It's not the kids' fault. It changed with COVID. I think our reaction to the COVID emergency damaged school kids, the ones that are hanging on the edge. The ones that are succeeding will always succeed. The ones that are hanging on the edge are falling off, and we have a problem there. We've got to recognize it. We've got to move forward, and we've got to find a different plan. We've got to get those kids reinvigorated to get back into school and get moving down the correct path. Now, how we do that, boy, that's a bigger problem. And I'm sorry, but I'm getting old. I realize it. But I still care about this community, and I care about the future of this community. And I don't want to see it go down the rabbit hole because we lost on the kids. We got to see the kids succeed, or the community's going to fail in the end. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Bloomfield, past Commissioner Bloomfield.
Long past.
Please, please put together what that budget request would look like and what it would accomplish, so we could get on it. It'd be hard for us at this point just to jump in and do something when we don't have a path that you're requesting. So please, put that together so we can look at it.
I'll talk with the Juvenile Courts, and we'll see what we can come up with. And of course, as a volunteer, I've got a pretty small amount to say about that. But that's okay. Don't mean I can't push.
Yeah.
And I'll drive on that if that's okay with you. And we'll go down that road and find out just how much time extra do they need, just one staff, a half a staff, whatever. We'll find that out, and we'll try to get that number to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments on items not on the agenda in the room today? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to our friends on Zoom. Are there any members of the public that have comment on items not on the agenda on Zoom? You can either raise your hand or turn your video on and flag me down. Okay, not seeing any additional comment on Zoom. So we'll move on to item number six, which is adoption of today's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move that we adopt the agenda as written?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, and motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes of June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, briefing minutes, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and July fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and June thirty, twenty twenty-two, special meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the June twenty-seventh briefing minutes, June twenty-first, and July fifth, regular minutes, and January thirty-first, June twenty-third, and June thirtieth, special meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, and motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, this is approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda, at which time a Commissioner or a member of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions or have an item removed for a separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Netherland, if you'd please take eight point one through four. Commissioner Trask, eight point five through eight, and I'll take the remainder.
Gladly, Mr. Chairman. Item number eight point one reads, approval of warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance. There is no claims clearing fund, direct deposit fund, warrants number eight eight four four nine through eight 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 five four. The amount, eight hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars, seventy cents. Salary clearing fund, warrants number seven zero zero six seven five zero through seven zero zero six seven eight five. The amount, one million, one hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty dollars, forty-eight cents. Treasurer's electronic remittance, four hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars, seventy-two cents. Item number eight point two reads, approval to sign the letter of support for the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Project application for funding through the Recreation and Conservation Office and to establish the framework and mutual collaboration necessary to bring the park forward. Item number eight point three, approval of the Olympic Health and Recovery Services, O H R S, Rural Communities Opioid Response Plan, R C O R P, Amendment Number One, to increase the certified substance use disorder peer navigator position by an additional point five FTE. Item number eight point four, approval of the contract K three one seven seven, Amendment Number Two, between Washington State Department of Agriculture and the Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board.
Item eight point five, approval to update the Enterprise Motor Vehicle Lease Signature Authority to Kevin Schutie as Board Chair, Mark Neary as County Administrator, Diane Zorn as Central Services Manager, and Jennifer Viarly as Budget and Finance Manager, and for permission for Jennifer Viarly to sign the authorized signer's form on behalf of Mason County. Item eight point six, approval to award the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Sewer Extension Project to the apparent low bidder, Pape and Sons Construction out of Gig Harbor, Washington, with a bid of four million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Item eight point seven, approval to execute the agreement with Kennedy Jinx Consultants Incorporated for Construction Management and Engineering Services for the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Sewer Project. Only approved if the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Sewer Extension Project is awarded. And item eight point eight, approval for the chair to sign the RCO landowner agreements between Mason County and the Mason Conservation District for implementing the salmon habitat improvement activities on lands owned by Mason County within the Skokomish watershed.
Item eight point nine, approval of the county road closure on Belfair Tahuya Road from mile post six point five zero to mile post seven point four seven, beginning at seven AM Monday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, to approximately four PM Friday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Item eight point ten, approval of the resolution amending, Resolution Number fifty-three dash fourteen, for the Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Committee Panel to redefine the membership section. Item eight point eleven, approval of the letter of support of Skookum Rotary's request to the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board for the ability to have an open campus for liquor consumption at the twenty twenty-two Oyster Fest event. Commissioners, having read through the items on today's action agenda, are there any items to be removed for a separate discussion and vote?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that item number eight point two be removed. It was at the request of an email that we received. And item eight point six.
Commissioners, any other items? Okay. Members of the public in the room, any items to be removed for a separate discussion or vote? Okay. Members of the public on Zoom, I see Ken, you have your, Ken Van Buskirk, your hand is raised.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that you got the email that I sent to you folks.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay, if there are no other items to be removed, I would entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the action agenda as presented, with the removal of item number eight point six and eight point two for individual vote.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the action agenda as presented, with the exception of items eight point two and eight point six, which are removed for a separate discussion and vote. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number eight point two, approval to sign the letter of support for the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Project application for funding through the Recreation and Conservation Office and to establish the framework and mutual collaboration necessary to bring the park forward. Mark, are you able to do a quick briefing on this item?
I am able to do a quick briefing on this item. Let me pull it up, I'm sorry. So this is an item that had been brought before the board in previous meetings. The board asked to receive additional information from letters of support that had been received by the Salmon Enhancement Group, and all of that information was provided to the board. I think that there's individual conversations that occurred also to make sure that all of the board's questions were answered. And now this is brought back before the board to sign on an approval of the letter for the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park Project. For those of you that aren't aware of it, it's in nineteen ninety-seven, the property was acquired with the objective of future development. In two thousand and fifteen, over fourteen thousand dollars was raised in order to do a land survey, update the conceptual design, and for thirty percent of the construction design. Project elements included a picnic shelter, a natural playground, public restrooms, water wheel with intercourse building, eighty accessible fishing dock, emergency call boxes, and potential barrier to prevent school visibility if needed. The Sweetwater Water Wheel Project will provide education and recreation opportunities in the Belfair urban growth area. The Port of Allen and Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group is asking the county to collaborate with the Recreation and Conservation Office, Department of Fish and Wildlife, North Mason School District, and entities to bring this much-needed project to Belfair. So this is asking the board to sign off an approval or in collaboration with this RCO application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mark? Okay. Members of the public, any questions before we move into comment? Okay, seeing none. With that, we will move into public comment on item eight point two. If there are members of the public in the room that would like to make comment, please raise your hand and get my attention. Okay, not seeing any comment in the room. We'll move to Zoom. Ken, I see your hand is raised. Ken, go ahead with your comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. If you're in Delta.
I'd like to read this into the record. Commissioners, I have read all the support letters for this project, and after discussion with one of the signers, they appear to be a boilerplate form letter provided by the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group, not by the Port of Allen, who is the primary sponsor. Mr. Capola's email to you regarding this matter is disparaging to my reputation and violates the port's recent settlement agreement with Mr. Brad Carey. Mr. Capola's email pales in comparison to letters my family members and I have received from a primary park proponent with the same sort of baseless accusations, further disparaging comments, and a false narrative directed at me. Ms. Corrigan, in her response to you, asks that specific and meaningful reasons be aired by the Commissioners if you don't affirm this park, and I'd like to offer these reasons for your consideration. One, there's the appearance of a conflict of interest with R C W fifty-three oh eight two sixty and two seventy. Ports can have parks, but they need to be ancillary to and more fully utilize existing air, sea, and ground transportation port facilities. For the Belfair U G A, a port industrial park with a recreational park element makes much more sense than this proposal, which is standalone. The property in question is currently not zoned appropriately for this proposal. The port had ample opportunity over the last two and a half years to ask for a rezon. I asked the port to weigh in on the planned action E I S several times and was ignored. Water, number three, water rights for Sweetwater Creek have long been relinquished. One of the RCO advisory group members in a past grant application brought this forward to the salmon group's attention, but I have heard no further discussion on this critical water rights issue. There is no support letter from the North Mason School District Superintendent. Superintendent Rosenbaugh, my wife and I all walked the property prior to the port taking possession. The property and trail were surveyed, and a thirty percent design criteria for the grant was developed without the school district landowner permission or approval. Superintendent Rosenbaugh is also aware of a landslide hazard area due east of the school district and now port property. Number five, the port property is still on D O E list of potentially contaminated properties. Number six, the Water Wheel is not an archaeological site as depicted in the recent E I S and as submitted by the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. This is an E I S that you all approved recently. There is the appearance of a gifting of public funds regarding the arborist hazard tree report to the Port of Allen. And number eight, War Scott planned restoration of Sweetwater Creek and the widening of Highry Three with two earth and dam removals will likely have significant impacts to the project area and is in conflict with the park's project proposal. Number nine, the eleventh hour anonymous donation to the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group to purchase the Peterson property rather than seek grant funding raises serious transparency and accountability issues for the port. Number ten, there are other, more sensitive, potentially litigation and liability issues that I am asking the port to investigate. As a follow-up to that ask, I received a call from the port's attorney yesterday. Thank you very much for your consideration, folks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public on Zoom that would like to make comment on item eight point two? Okay, seeing no additional public comment either on Zoom or in the room, and Ken, I believe, was the only written testimony that we received on this prior. I will close public comment and move to commissioner deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the letter of support for the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Project application for funding through the Recreation and Conservation Office and to establish the framework and mutual collaboration necessary to bring the park forward.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve signing the letter of support for the Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park Project application for funding through the Recreation and Conservation Office and to establish framework and mutual collaboration necessary to bring the park forward. Commissioners, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just clarify a few points that was brought up by the public. You know, picking out R C Ws and talking about them, it's important that the full aspect that R C W be recognized. First of all, there's more R C Ws than just the ones that are mentioned. R C W five three point oh eight point oh six oh is under the port's powers for improvements of waterways. And if you read that, you will also find in the end that it breaks down and makes clear that they have the ability and such to improve, et cetera, et cetera, for all types of waterways, whether they be navigable or not. So I wanted to point that part out. I wanted to point out that two five five, same number, five three point oh eight point two five five, also gives them the ability to do these types of parks and recreation facilities for tourism. Under item number, as was mentioned, that the citizen thought it was in conflict with oh six or with two six oh. I want to point out that it is not in conflict with two six oh. It does go through to specify all the different things that it can do, and he is right when he talks about piers, air, land, water, pasture, transfer terminals, comma, waterways, which, as was established in the earlier one, waterways does not have to be navigable. So waterways is a specific item that the port can do parks and recreation for. And under the two seven oh, it goes through the same basic premise of what they can do and what they cannot do, but he had mentioned that if it's in conflict with the county, the proposal was sent through to the county. We know it was because it's in our park's comprehensive plan. And even still, it says in this R C W that if it is not specifically rejected within sixty days, it is automatically approved or accepted by the county. So I wanted to point out that those things, that this project is not in conflict with any of those R C Ws, and it also would not be our responsibility to determine that anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner Trask, any discussion?
I just want to thank all the people that wrote in the letters of support. Those were the things that I asked for, and they were delivered to me. I also want to make sure that as this park moves forward, everybody is included in the conversation. Let's make it into a team project, and I think the more we work together, the more our community works together, the more things will happen for the good of Mason County. So I just want to encourage everyone to work together on this.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll echo some of those sentiments. I, you know, I too, initially had reservations about signing the letter of support. I outlined those concerns, both in our briefings and then in a conversation with Mindy Harlow from the Salmon Enhancement Group, as well as one of her board members. And, you know, but from the, you know, let's get this, you know, from the top here. They were willing to add, I think, important language to our letter of support that goes beyond what they had provided to us to discuss removal of fish passage barriers. Everybody here is probably well aware, the work that we all have to do in that regard, in terms of culvert replacement, and they were able to include language that identified. two dams that are on Sweetwater Creek. And my expectation in having that added to the letter is that there will be effort made to mitigate those passage barriers. The other, the other issue there was, you know, looking at the recently secured funding for widening on SR3 in the area of Sweetwater Creek and really making that concerted effort to work collaboratively with Fish and Wildlife, with DOT, with the county, and getting those partners together so that we're not developing a park and then having to tear out any infrastructure in order to do the widening as those transportation dollars come online in future years. The onus is now on the Port of Allen and the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group to make that happen. That's what the state's Recreation and Conservation Office is going to be looking for. They're going to be looking for project partners working together in order to get things done. And so the pressure is on, and I think, you know, candidly, I think the Port of Allen has some room for improvement in terms of how they work with their partners. I've been very clear about that from the beginning on this. And I think Mr. Van Buskirk's comments, even though there are some gaps in maybe some of the legal analysis, none of us are lawyers, so we're not, we're not speaking on this from any position of, you know, being, being any kind of legal scholars by far, but the fact that there are still questions that remain are, you know, something that is going to have to be addressed. And again, that pressure is on the project sponsors. Our support of this is tied to the value and the merit we see the project having if these things can get resolved at the local and state level. We want to see more park development, in particular in North Mason. We want to see those investments come here. We don't want to see those investments only stay in King County or, you know, other parts of the state. We want to see those investments happening here in Mason County, and we think Belfair is a great place to make those investments. In fact, that's what we're going to be talking about next, is making investments in Belfair. And so it's not a, it's not an argument about what the merits of this project are. Those are going to be determined at the state level. That's going to be evaluated there. But what we're looking for here is how do we go through a process that works for all the partners? How do we alleviate some of these concerns and address them in a way that makes the public, you know, confident that these entities are working together? And so I too will be supportive of signing this letter. I think the park has merit. I do appreciate the Salmon Enhancement Group working with all three of us in order to find a way to get this letter across the finish line, and I look forward to the state now evaluating that project as they go through their process. Commissioners, any other comments before I call for the vote?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I will be also voting in favor. It's not just covering that legal information. I want to point out that the knowledge I picked up of that was just not overnight. I actually was a port commissioner for six years, and this is not the first time that that question had come up about whether you could have parks or not and what the reasonings are behind having parks. So I was already aware of it before I ever became a county commissioner here. This park is extremely important to the community. You know, Belfair UGA is not a city. People think of Belfair as a city. It is not. It is the county's responsibility, is urban growth area, of which we have complete control over, and it is partially our responsibility to make sure parks and stuff occur on that. Right now, the only park we have in all of Belfair UGA is leased to the transit. We have a couple of tables there while they're waiting for the buses, William O. Hunter Park, and that's all there is. We should, in my opinion, even be doing more than a letter of support. We should be actually partners in making this park happen. A park where, where they're going to fix up the waterways and they have ADA-accessible pier out there so that they can, people with disabilities and veterans and the like can come and fish off that. That, to me, is incredible. They're going to have a beautiful thing for the kids to play on, which, again, we don't have there in Belfair UGA at all, where the kids can go and play. We should be an active partner in that, not just a letter of support. But with that being said, I appreciate that we're at least doing the letter of support. Hopefully, in the future, we'll look at bringing more park facilities to the actual UGA of Belfair, and I appreciate the commissioners supporting this. You know, it has been a long journey, and I appreciate all the work that went into getting this support. But with that being said, I do want to clarify one last thing. We know the school district is on board with it regardless of what was said of a letter of support, because they're the ones that donated the property to the port to do it. So the school district is for sure on board with it, or they would not have given the property in order to have the park. So with that, I will be voting yes also.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion, commissioners, before I call for the vote? Okay, hearing none. With that, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, and we'll move on to item eight point six. Approval to award the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Sewer Extension Project to the apparent low bidder, Papay and Sons Construction out of Gig Harbor, Washington, with a bid of $4,231,500. And ask staff to brief.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So yes, we are requesting approval to award this contract. The bids are good until July 26th. We had a 60-day period to award. Should the board approve this award, we are recommending that the Public Works Board loan be used to finance the project. Loan payment for this would begin, or loan repayment would begin in 2024, and this is when the project is deemed complete and closed out. We're assuming about a one-year period for construction. Payment has been estimated to be on the range of $235,000 to about $251,000 per year, and staff is recommending that this be paid out of REIT 2. Now, there may be a future decision. I understand commissioners are looking at ARPA projects, and Public Works did submit this project as a potential for ARPA funding as well, but that could certainly affect what the loan amount is should you decide to proceed this morning, Commissioners. There is existing debt on the Belfair sewer system, as you're aware. This debt will be paid off in 2027. That is the last payment for our current debt. So if you decide to proceed this morning, there will be four years when we've got the current debt that it needs to be paid plus repayment of new debt. And that would be approximately $1.18 million per year for that four-year period, and then again, after that, on the order of $235,000 to $250,000 per year. I'm going to leave it a kind of short and simple at this point, Commissioners, and open it to any specific questions that you may have, or if Mark or Richard have any. Richard has kind of a nice synopsis of the alternatives, if you like, Commissioners. We did talk about just what does it look like if we do nothing financially? We looked at a couple scenarios for taking a look at a combination, just for example purposes, of a $5 million loan through the Public Works Board versus a $3.5 million loan and one and a half with ARPA, and happy to recap kind of what the end game is about. So over the history of the, of debt repayment, what does that look like? And certainly, Richard can give a quick recap of that.
If you like.
If you like.
Here, I got the cup tea for each of you. I just made this this morning. Otherwise, I'd have got it too much sooner. This is probably the spreadsheet I should have been trying to show you all along. This is actually, if you just add at the end of that giant spreadsheet, this is how it really works out. And the amount of REIT 09 we would be using for that entire period, well, this is for a period of 2022 through 2048, where the other loan at its worst possible option would be paid off. So really, if we don't do an extension, and we don't have any rate increases, and we just keep everything the same through 2048, it's estimated that we'd still be using like $13 million-plus in REIT and $3.789 million in 09 tax, which would still be, would still be trying to figure out. We're at a $2.2 million deficit still at that point, and that's taking into consideration all those factors of the general sewer plan and capital improvement programs. So if you go down below that to Public Works Board Funding Option B, the 20-year loan at 0.54% interest, you could see those same amounts of REIT 09 and deficit. Well, actually, they're different amounts for each one. So, and at the very end also on this spreadsheet, there is available ERUs that were created. So under the first scenario, no extension, no new ERUs created. Under that Public Works Option B, you extend a sewer and no rate increase. It's estimated that you'd still be using $17 million-plus in REIT, $3.6 in 09 with a $3.35 million deficit, 2,000 ERUs created and available. Extend the sewer rate, and you increase, extend the sewer, your rate increases 1% greater than inflation, you'd be using 5 million, 5.7 in REIT, 2.7 in 09, and you'd have a $279,000 surplus. So you follow it down, extend the sewer, the max tolerable rate with the annual CPI rate increases, 4.8 million in REIT, 2.8 in 09 with nearly half a million dollar surplus. And so that's, that's kind of how it goes. The one below Public Works Option A is a 22-year loan. Same sort of deal, 17.179 for extended sewer, no rate increase in REIT used, 3.8 in 09 with a 3.1 deficit at the end of all that. So 5.2 for the sewer, extended sewer rate increase of 1% over inflation, 5.2 in 09 used, 3.3 in, in 09, and a $220,000 surplus, 2,000 ERUs created. And finally, the last extended sewer, you know, the max tolerable rate implemented at the beginning with an annual CPI rate increase, you'd use $4.8 million in REIT, $2.8 million in 09, and you'd have a deficit, or you'd actually have a surplus of $283,000.
Richard, real quick, can you just say again what MTR stands for?
Maximum Tolerable, yeah. And that, MTR is like implemented next year. That's, that's how that spreadsheet was set up, and I'm not saying that we're doing that. I'm just saying that was the scenarios that I had set up and just ran.
Gotcha, okay. Question, another one?
Yeah, explain to me, you've captured where the site 2,000 ERUs, what is that? And what are you basing that on? Are you saying we're going to get those?
No, that's what's created and available to, for hookups.
You're saying we have none now?
I'm saying that there's none above the, yeah, up above the, above the rail line where there's no sewer, there's no ERUs if we don't, you know, if there's no extension. There's no...
So you're only talking above the rail line, you're saying this would be the ability to hook up 2,000. What did the landmass show that it's possible up there?
That's taking in if PISA hooked into it too. That's how much hydraulic capacity would be available in those lines north of the rail lines. Where it comes from, I have no idea. Whether it's on the other side of the SR3, could be some brought in from there.
Serves, serves the northern portion of UGA and a portion of the southern part, I think.
So basically, you're not saying we get any of these, we just...
It's just that, that a possibility. Yeah, I'm not saying that anything's, I don't know. That's, that's, and that's a whole other thing. The spreadsheet was run up only with what I know, only with what's in the hopper of being hooked up and has a significant investment already.
And that's a development that's occurring on Olympic Ridge.
Yep.
Yeah, so all the, actually, we have now is, is the development that's already occurring.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions for Richard or Loretta? Okay, any, any members of the public in the room have questions for Richard or Loretta? Okay, any members of the public on Zoom have? Need to get that.
Tell me that we're having a hearing.
I see, Greg, you have your hand up. Greg, do you have a question for staff?
I do. I was wondering if we do nothing but just, since Olympic View and Olympic Ridge are being developed and we're going to be getting a lot of ERUs from them, would we, would the sewer be self-sust, I mean, would operation and maintenance be able to be done by the rate payers of the rates that are collected once all the units are, you know, are online? That they've all paid their, their hookup fees, they're all, you know, operational? Would the sewer be able to be self-sustaining?
Only for a short period of time. Without rate increases, the inflation would catch up and pass it up.
That, that, what I mean, you know, all, I should have probably... Asked the question different. If we did nothing but, but just allow periodic rate increases to keep up, would we be able to, would the, would the sewer be self-sustaining? Would it be able to survive on what the rates are, you know, the rates as they're coming in? The ERUs that would be added?
Yeah, it would pay for the O and M, and again, that would, but the capital portion, the debt payment, it wouldn't need that.
Okay, with now, if more capital needed to be spent to sustain everything that, you know, that would include Olympic Ridge and Olympic View, would you be able to take that out of the, is the scope of the loan that you're seeking? Would that also be able to pay for that, or is it only for the extension itself?
Scope of the loan, it'd just be for the extension itself.
Capital money that would have to be spent, would it have to be borrowed from another loan, or you'd have to find some other way to come up with it? Is that correct?
It would be either use of 0.09 or REIT.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public on Zoom have questions for staff? Okay, not seeing any additional questions on Zoom. We will go ahead and move into public comment on item eight point six. Again, kind of follows the same process as before. We'll start with folks that are in the room. Raise your hand to get my attention, and again, just try to keep your comments concise to about that three minutes so we can allow for as many people to comment as we would like, as they would like. With that, we'll open it up to the room for public comment.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is David Overton. Happy to be here today. I see your occupancy says 40. I think on your near-term capital budget allocation items, you may want to look at expanding this room, because I imagine you're going to get more people now that were excited to be back together. I wanted to speak to you briefly on this project and commend the time and effort that staff has taken for briefing it. I've reviewed the majority of the documents, and it's good to see the state and local jurisdictions, as well as your county staff recommending preferred alternatives to move forward with this project. As we have done before with some of our lands inside the urban growth area with both the Olympic Ridge project that's bringing 144 homes and the Olympic View project that's bringing 230 apartments to the UGA, we're excited for economic development opportunities inside the urban growth area. If we don't have utilities in the area, we won't be able to compete with other jurisdictions for opportunities. We've been a longtime partner with Mason County EDC to recruit businesses and grow our existing businesses in the area. There are very few places in Mason County that you can do this. In North Mason, we have almost all the utility capacity that we need to be more competitive than other neighboring jurisdictions. So we're excited to work forward with this. Staff has been great to work with, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I feel like I've been doing that for several years and recently answering some very unique questions about our involvement in the project. We, like anyone else, are working with staff and are excited to support this if it does go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in the room have comment on item eight point six? Okay, moving on to members of the public on our Zoom. Again, if you'd like to make comment on item eight point six, go ahead and raise your hand on the Zoom or mute yourself, return your video. your hand on the Zoom or mute yourself, return your video on and otherwise get my attention. Okay, seeing no comment on Zoom. Mackenzie, did we receive any written comment on item eight point six?
No, we did not.
Okay. So, with that, I will close, I will close public comment on item eight point six and move into Commissioner's deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we award the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Sewer Extension Project to the apparent low builder, low bill, goodness, low bidder, Papay and Sons Construction out of Gig Harbor, Washington with a bid of four million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to award the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Sewer Extension Project to the low bidder, Papay and Sons Construction out of Gig Harbor, Washington with a bid of four million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Commissioners, any discussion on item eight point six?
Yeah, I'll go first. I've said before many times that the responsibility of a local government, whether it's city or counties, is to provide infrastructure to their communities. It's a responsibility, one of the responsibilities that I don't take lightly. And, and so, for this reason, I'm gonna, I support moving this forward. We have other options, I know that the, I don't want to add more debt, I mean, I don't even like credit card debt. However, I also sit on the Public Works Board for the state, and this is what we do. We help, as the Public Works Board, that we help communities provide services to their constituents, to their residents. And so, it's helped me understand more the role of, of local governments. Typically, other governments, other counties, cities, they don't have the concerns, I guess the, some, some comments that are borderline. They don't have that. They have the support of the community because they understand the direction the community needs to go. And this is throughout the state. And so, I understand concern for future, I understand the concern for debt, but I also understand our, our obligations and our responsibilities. And so, for this, I will be voting in support of this. And further down the road, I'd like to bring up conversations about how to pay the loan off quicker.
Thank you, Commissioner Nellin, any discussion?
Yes. First, I'm going to apologize to my community, to North Mason, but to all of Mason County, that I was not able to get this stopped. This is a horrible thing that is about to occur here. We're going to go further into debt without a true benefit analysis, without a true reasoning of why we're picking this location. We're going to go into debt, as was mentioned, other communities do this, but they also set it up with a financial situation where they get paid back by the individuals when they put their infrastructure in. There are taxing districts that can be created, there are different ways, we don't just usually give it, and we don't just usually put it through one landowner's property and let them benefit from all the value that that come, that comes with that investment. And I call it an investment, which is a sad thing because it's not an investment, we have no way of showing that we're ever going to get a dime above our money in the next thirty years. We've never even had that analysis to show how we're going to get that money. As was mentioned, we can show that there's a capacity, but there's no way of, of figuring out how we're going to get back five million dollars. Now, even when people hook up, they hook up to the already existing facility. So, there's a cost for that hookup, that's the cost that everybody shares in. This is different. This is going through one specific landowner's property, improving the land value in that one specific landowner, yes, others may eventually be able to hook up to it. But right now, this investment is definitely going to benefit one particular area, which even still just had a rezone that nobody else in the county has. This whole process, I've been very uncomfortable with from the beginning, and I apologize, I've not been able to stop it, I think it is completely bad business. We're already in debt. We have a finding from the state auditor saying that we owe more than we can pay back. So, we're going to get ourselves out of trouble by borrowing more money and putting ourselves further in debt. That doesn't even make any sense, does it? Especially without some type of, of guarantee we'll get our money back. It just, to me, it doesn't make any sense at all, and I think it's extremely inappropriate. But again, I don't know how we're going to fix a finding of not bringing in enough money by taking on more debt because even over twenty years, if we were able to get that money back, it'd be a shock. So, again, if we did nothing, I'm, first of all, I'm not against sewer extension, I want to make that root clear. Because there's, there's different things I've heard out in the community that I'm against it, I'm not against it, I'm against spending your money to do it. That's what I'm against. Property owners all throughout the Mason County, when they've done their own extensions and they've built into their own properties, they put their infrastructure in. That's not just for sewer, that is for power, that is for water, you build a development, you put all that stuff in, you pay for that, and then you dedicate it back to the organization that you're, you're doing it with. They don't pay for that. We cannot get grant money, true grant money on this because it's for speculation. Counties also do not do speculation, and that's why the government entities do not give us money for that. So, although it was mentioned that this is what government does, this is not what government does. Government can put in sewer, and if we did, we should put it right down the middle of the road so that everybody could, could access it. Another thing, borrowing money, you can't spend it twice. We have things that are so much more important. Yes, this particular loan can be only used for sewer. Because you're offered a loan does not mean you have to take the loan. Any loan we take, we have to pay back. If I'm going to take a loan, I'd like to look at a jail. That's the thing that this county needs most, and it needs more than this, especially a speculation where we don't know what we're ever going to get. So, let's say we get a hundred up there. We need thousands to pay it back. All of Belfair UGA currently has, I think it's two hundred and eighty-nine customers or right up there, we may have topped three hundred, I think it's two eighty-nine, and then we have four hundred and twenty-one ERUs now. We need thousands to pay off this loan. It doesn't make any sense at all. So, again, you know, I, I apologize, I've not been able to figure out how to do it. I do not, I want to make something very clear because it's come up over and over again. I've never said that my counterparts are doing anything illegal. I think it's improper. I would not give this loan and give, or give this money to one developer who can turn around and sell the property and collect that, that value. But being improper is sometimes just a decision. I believe that they think that by creating this situation, you can create growth. But I think first, we need to fix the problem we have now, which if we did nothing, our debt would be done in five years. Now, we're going to extend our debt another twenty years. It just doesn't make sense, especially when we're not going to get the return on an investment. So, with that being said, I will be voting against it. And again, though, I want to remind, it, it's not just my community. In all my years as a commissioner, I think the most I've ever seen is thirty emails from the public on a specific issue, and it's usually copy and paste. You know, everybody else signs it, there's five or six that are real. Just had a hundred and seventy people email in saying, do not do this. It had eight in favor of it. The community knows this is wrong. I have a feeling that eventually, and I hope I'm wrong on this, but I have, I've, because we are not getting anything back, and I've never found anywhere, and I've asked others to look for it, I think staff has done some investigation too, we cannot find a situation where this has been built like this and just given to the landowner. Usually, even wherever it is, they end up getting their money back somehow through a utility limited improvement district or something. So, with that being said, I will be voting against it. I hope we're never put in this situation again, and I sure hope like heck that we don't end up having to pay a greater price for this action as we're looking at developers that were never able to get the same pick a winner investment of money into their property as we're doing into this one individual's property.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few comments. First, just thanks to staff. This has been, the record has been open on this for eight months now. We have received comments, quite a few comments initially based on some misinformation about a rate increase that was never the intent of the commission, that has been resolved at the legislative level. And so, yeah, there was a lot of interest in this in December and January, and we had a, I think, a really productive four-hour-plus public hearing at the end of January, and we walked through the proposal, and we walked through some of the changes that we were proposing to the legislature, which ultimately the legislature accepted. And so, staff has just been really diligent in answering not only the commission's questions, but also being very open to receiving and answering questions from the public. And so, hats off to Loretta, Richard, Justin, Mark, our finance team with, with Jennifer and our consultants at Kennedy Jenks, as well as folks from the state's Public Works Board for coming and joining those meetings and walking through some of those processes and what, what their work is like and what they do statewide for communities like ours. I also would like to apologize to the community. I'd like to apologize to the residents of District Two and Three and District One for ten years of the inability to get this problem solved. Decade-plus of not being able to get this problem solved. Think about that. And then think about what happened in twenty seventeen when the commission at the time unanimously went to the legislature and asked for help in order to get funding when we were identifying partners both on the public sector at the port of Bremerton and the city of Bremerton, but also in the private sector. We can't do it alone. We need partners all the way around. And so, I apologize that it took that long for the county and the commission to get it together enough to figure out that partnerships do matter. All of that was done unanimously, including accepting the signing of this loan document from Public Works Board in March of twenty twenty. And it wasn't done in a vacuum. It was done in conjunction with a planned action EIS, something that again, unfortunately took a decade to get moving. So, yeah, apologies all the way around that your county government was that inefficient for that long and unable to get things moving from Belfair. What else happened in the past few years? We've also received more than one point five million dollars in debt and loan forgiveness from the legislature, thanks to our legislative delegation. Thanks Drew McEwen, thanks Dan Griffey, thanks Tim Sheldon, going to bat for us year in and year out, including five hundred thousand dollars this legislative session to finally retire our Department of Ecology loans and to allow us to build up those reserves in REIT to pay off that old debt within the next few years. Now, I know that there's always going to be conversation about what else could we do? Let's have that conversation. Let's go do other things for this community. We need a jail. That jail's older than me. I'm doing okay, but a thirty-seven-year-old jail isn't what we need. But find me a jail that you can build with five point one million dollars. In fact, they tried that a few years ago, before I came on the commission, we did a little remodel project over there. And here we are, back at square one. We don't need small ideas, we need big ideas. We need people who are willing to lean into the work, find the partners, get it done. We need people who are willing to deliver and put politics aside for this community, or else we're never going to get over the hump. We have a voted and unvoted debt capacity in this county of two hundred and nine million dollars. This project represents two percent of that. So, don't tell me we can't do big things for this community because we can, and I think we should, and I hope we will, but it's not going to be without work. Now, the other thing that I want to address is when we went through this process initially, we looked at all the different alignments in order to get this to the port of Bremerton so that we can continue working with them. We looked at following initially the freight corridor track, which by the way, another eighty million dollar investment in North Mason, and thanks Commissioner Nellin for advocating for that. It came with a large gas tax increase, but it was an important investment that this community wanted in order to get that road built. We looked at that, that was four times the cost of what we're talking about today. We also looked at running the sewer along the state right-of-way on SR three. I don't know about you, but I don't like sitting in traffic down SR three in Belfair on any day, but think about a Friday, if we went up that right-of-way, tore that road up, put that to one lane, good luck, okay? We looked at these ideas, and this one was the one that made the most sense from a feasibility perspective, from a financial perspective, from potential growth perspective. And we're actually seeing that being borne out by three hundred and forty-four single multifamily homes being built on the ridge. This is not the last step in the plan for growing Belfair and growing Mason County responsibly. It's not. We still have more work to do. There are other areas of the UGA that need to be serviced, that deserve to be serviced, and if those folks have projects, our doors are open. I've met with them, I've talked with them. If they're ready to make those investments, we're ready to partner with them. Because we partner with one group or another at one time, doesn't mean we're shutting the door on everybody else. I sat in this room with staff and had that meeting in February after we did the planned action EIS that rezoned more than just one area of the UGA. So, enough is enough. We need to move forward and get things done for the people of Mason County, and we're starting here today, and there's much more that we need to do.
Mr. Chair, so, I want to make something clear. There was a unanimous vote for accepting a line of credit. If you watched the meeting, there were deals that were made in order to get to that, but it was also very much expressed at the end of that briefing, it's on video. I do not support this project, and I will not support it unless there's a ULID or something to recoup our money back. And I cannot in any good faith support something that we're just giving money to one particular person or one organization or one corner of our county without a way of retrieving our money back. As for the gas taxes, you know, it's funny, it was attached to a gas tax, and I was supportive, and I did work real hard to get the bypass. I was down there and we put together the Westside Alliance that made all that possible, not in order, in order to get a gas tax, but because we knew there was one coming in order to get our project on that list, and that's the way it should always be done. If they're going to tax you, you might as well get something out of it. So, it was worth it to go and do that, and I, I do not apologize for that. As for what's been done, people may not notice quite often what's been done to take care of the sewer situation, but if you realize we are five years away from having it paid off, that is fixing the situation. And you do not fix it by borrowing more money. You just don't. Doing something is not always the answer. Doing something that will have a positive impact on it is the answer. Expending money out, not taking money in. Expending money out so you get a little bit in. And as for the three hundred and forty-four homes, that is such a benefit, I want to point out that yes, it is a benefit to this system, and they paid for their infrastructure themselves, just like every other developer in this county. Lakeland Village, what is it, you know, the different places out there like Beards Cove, Lynch Cove, all of them put in their own infrastructure because that's what you do. I don't understand how we can say that that's such a benefit when they do their own work, but we're going to be okay and just give this one particular person, this one particular landowner or development, all this money without a possibility of getting it back through some type of ULID, and it is debt. Unless we do something different, it is debt, and I have not heard anything different that we're going to do. The recommendation is to take the loan, and the loan will put us further in debt, put us farther from getting it fixed, not get us closer. Five years away from get, from breaking even on this thing and getting us out from underneath it. And let, even if we find, we can even find other ways to maybe even do it sooner, but doing nothing is better than taking on more debt. And one last thing again, I said it, but I'm going to say it one more time. Three hundred and forty-four homes are beneficial to this system. It's all going up that hill, and they paid for their own sewer infrastructure because that's how it's done everywhere, except for this project.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And motion carries. Moving on to item nine, other business, an opportunity for department heads and elected officials to address other business opportunity for department heads and elected officials to address the commission. Sheriff, I think you had a... Did you want to? I think you have seniority.
That's nice. I know seniority's a good thing.
It's kind of nice being in a position where we're more from the outside viewing things in a few months, but I would tell you something from having sat here for 16 years. Today's important, the discussions that were had today. I was telling Sheriff Leck that every one of these conversations that goes on in the room, whether it's a project development or whatever's going on, it's what I've learned is that it's intertwined with everything else that we do in our county. New houses, I told Ryan, I said, "Listen, what are we doing to bring the number of deputies up, because we're going to have to have somebody to defend that area and to patrol that area?" You know, everything that we do in here this morning is, or that you're doing in these meetings, is interconnected with somebody else in the county, whether it's the Health Department having to accommodate other things that are coming in with new buildings and things. Although the discussions I have learned over the years may somewhat get different opinions and heated, it's good discussion. And I'm glad that we're having those things in Mason County. I'm especially glad today to walk in and see again a number of you, to see your face. Love the guys on the screen, but I don't do business that way. I would rather see people personally, and I think it's great to be back in here. I have two things today that, one of them's kind of a reminder because of the time away from all of us doing business, it's important. And another one is just a recognition, I think is kind of a unique recognition, to receive some recognition of award for something that's actually a privilege. I understand, I know at least two of you and maybe more of you, I have veterans in the room today. I know at least two were sitting next to me, David and Ryan. Is there any other veterans in the room today?
Right.
Thank you, Steve. So, this, what I wanted to bring mainly to the attention of the commission was something, and as I say, I think it's a, to receive an award for something that's actually a privilege is kind of a unique thing. This last year, the sheriff's office received an award from the employment supporter of the National Guard and the reserves for above and beyond the Mason County Sheriff's Office for our support of our reservists and our military. As you know, we do hire a lot of people in our office that are veterans, and a number of those people are serving, continuing to serve their country as National Guard and reservists in the branches of the service. And with that comes the sometimes difficulty that that person's going to be deployed somewhere else in the world, and you're without that employee for a while. And it is challenging. A few years ago, I had the opportunity to go with Deputy Culpits to the airbase at McCord and go up in flight with him on a big delivery of C, Globemaster, I can't remember, C-7 Globemaster, whatever it was, and have the guard explain why this is important to have employers support these airmen while they're being deployed, and they know they're going to have their job when they come back. We've been a great supporter of that because we have so many people that are serving both our community and our country in different parts of the world. So, this year, we received an award from the employer's support of the Guard and Reserve for the above and beyond award to the Mason County Sheriff's Office, presented on behalf of the men and women of the National Guard and Reserve Forces for outstanding service and continuing support to the national defense. Again, I look at that as our privilege to have had these people working in our office. And so, I wanted to tell you about it more than anything, but also what I wanted to do is recognize all the departments, any of our veterans and any of our reservists and guard people that give that time beyond their work time to our country. And so, that's all it is, is just more of a reminder and a privilege that we received an award for something that we should all be doing anyway, supporting the great people of our guard. So, thank you, the veterans and those that are still serving. We'll put that in the office there. The second was, going back, I guess a reminder for all of us, your signatures, I believe, are on here. We've had the opportunity in Mason County to have, we have two great tribes in our county, the Skowkamish and the Squawson Island Tribe. And as a result of that, a number of years ago, working with tribes in law enforcement, I had the privilege of joining a committee, or actually forming a committee with the state of Washington called the Indian Country Law Committee. And it had to do with the relationships between tribes and non-tribal policing units and how we work together. And that was formed 16 years ago, and all but one year I sat on that. When I became Wausau president, I couldn't sit on that. But our work with our tribes locally has been like no other place in the entire country. We work very, very closely with both of our tribes and our community. And last year, about a year ago, we worked with our prosecutor's office and Prosecutor Whitehead, Senior Deputy Prosecutor Whitehead, and actually, UnderSheriff Adams were the ones that helped put this together. It was an amendment in our local agreement of understanding between Squawson Island Tribe and the Mason County Sheriff's Office, then the prosecution of cases, because we're looking at basically independent nation, a sovereign nation, how are we going to prosecute crimes. For those of you that aren't involved in law enforcement or don't have to do these things, sometimes in the middle of the night at 3:00 in the morning, you're either on the reservation or you're off the reservation. You're either with a tribal member or a non-tribal member. And all those things take effect in how the law is carried out and how we move forward with prosecution of cases. And one of those things that we have worked on, and again, I want to credit UnderSheriff Adams and Prosecutor Whitehead and Kevin, help with the name?
Liam.
Kevin Lyon. I know his name so well. I call him Prosecutor Kevin with the Squawson, that we work together when these cases are referred, so that the tribe and the county has the ability to look at a prosecution and move it forward in the most efficient way that benefits us and the tribe throughout the court system. So, we had worked on that amendment and put that together, and you had all signed it a number of months ago, but we waited because COVID issue. The tribe, we want to do that in person. And so, Sheriff Leck, Sperling, and I and our staff went out last week and met with tribal council to reintroduce ourselves to them, because we haven't seen again in person. And the signature was granted by the tribe with Chris Peters, former police chief, and now the tribal chair of the memorandum. We will continue to work on our issues involving the law with our prosecutor's office and the tribe. And I say that again, this is unique. When you look across the United States, and even in our own state, our relationship with the tribes here and what we're doing, working with a sovereign nation, tribal, non-tribal units, is probably the best in the country anywhere. And so, I recognize the tribe for being involved in that prosecutor's office. And also, when I had that day, I had Sheriff Leck Sperling sign along with me, recognizing from our side in the sheriff's office. So, I gave you a copy of this, the original of that. Your signatures are already on this. The, I guess, kind of two originals. The original of that document held in our office, I don't know where you guys put this, but it has your signatures on it. So, thank you for that today, and thank you for the tribes, the work on that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I don't know. Sheriff Leck Sperling actually went to the program recognizing on both our Guard and Veteran Reserve recognition, and also sat in the other day. Did you have any comment on either one of those, Ryan? You'd like to bring forward?
This particular award was particularly given to us because of our support of now Sergeant Carlos Rangel, who was in Ukraine a year before, training Ukrainian soldiers from the 81st Brigade here in Washington State National Guard. And he left just a few weeks before the invasion, and he was even showing us videos of the building he had been in for a year getting blown up during the invasion. So, our support obviously was important. He's a captain in the National Guard and was training a lot of those forces over there. So, it was particularly significant with the world events going on now.
Dave, I keep looking at you kind of the retired sergeant major who's been through this, and been deployed, and I very much appreciate your time in the Middle East and with that. So, thank you very much. Just wanted to show it to you, and I hope that we will always continue, and I'm sure that we will throughout Mason County government, to support our veterans and our soldiers that are doing all this work for us, whether it's in reserve capacity, as the Guard and Reserve, or full-time capacity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. God bless them. Any other department heads or electeds? I don't see anybody on Zoom. Okay, very good. Moving on to item number 10, point one, we have a public hearing to consider six open space taxation agreement applications and ask staff to brief.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Diane Zorn, Central Services Manager. Today's a public hearing to consider six applications for the 2021 open space current use taxation program. These were received by the assessor's office and forwarded down, recommended with approval, and planning staff did review them. The applications are from John and Kimberly Becker, Zachary Schmidt, Tiffany Summers, Charles Summers, JM Resources, Joel Menke, Louis Metcalf, Carol Booth, and
Sorry, Commissioner Madoff doesn't have a copy, so I was just asking Commissioner Trask that if we get to that point, she can make a motion. Sorry, it's a distraction.
Okay, okay.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay. Members of the public in the room, any questions for staff on item 10.1? Any members of the public on Zoom have questions for staff on item 10.1? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Okay, very good. Seeing no questions for staff on item 10.1, we'll move into public comment on item 10.1. Begin with folks in the room. If you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand on item 10.1. Okay, no comment in the room. Any members of the public on Zoom have questions, or I'm sorry, would like to make comment on item 10.1? Either unmute yourself or raise your hand. Okay, not seeing any comment requests on Zoom. Kenzie, do we receive any written comment for item 10.1?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. Having solicited the room, the virtual room, and written testimony, and receiving none, I'll close public comment and move to Commissioner deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the following 2021 open space applications pursuant to the recommendations of the county assessor. John and Kimberly Becker, parcel number 12329-11-00010. Zachary Schmidt, parcel number 22304-75-00080. Tiffany Summers, parcel number 12232-31-00020. Charles Summers, parcel number 12232-34-00000. JM Resources, parcel number 32016-50-00013. And Louis and Mike Metcalf and Carol Booth, parcel number 42107-41-00000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the following 2021 open space applications pursuant to the recommendation of the county assessor. John and Kimberly Becker, parcel number 12329-11-00010. Zachary Schmidt, parcel number 22304-75-00080. Tiffany Summers, parcel number 12232-31-00020. Charles Summers, parcel number 12232-34-00000. JM Resources, parcel number 32016-50-00013. And Louis and Mike Metcalf and Carol Booth, parcel number 42107-41-00000. Commissioners, it's been moved and seconded to approve that motion. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick, I want to thank the assessor's office for working through this. Thank everybody up there. Diane, thank you so much. It's quite the process. I guess the government process is sometimes fun, sometimes not. But we sure appreciate staff and...
These are fun. This is Mr. Metcalf.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, I just think, thanks for following the process.
And just so the public knows, this is not something that's done willy-nilly. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and they have to abide by a lot of different things in order to get this. This isn't just something we just give upon them. So, with that being known, just know that people are giving back to the community with some of these things in the terms of open space, and that means that they cannot build and do other things on their property. I'm always in favor that if it's done at arms-length transaction, if you choose to do that yourself. I never like it when government puts that on you, but if you choose to do what you're going to do with your property and put restrictions on it and leave it open for the public's viewing and sometimes usage, thank you.
Are you Louis or Mike?
Louis.
Thank you. It's good to have you here. Yeah, so I'll just echo the appreciation of Diane for working on this, but also to our assessor's office. Vicky, it's good to have you with us, and our thanks as well to Patty and your whole team upstairs. You know, oftentimes, the assessor's office is, you know, not everybody's favorite county office, right? You very rarely come with good news.
Yes, absolutely.
And so, we certainly recognize that a lot of the work that you do, in fact, all of it, is prescriptive. It's outlined in RCW. And so, when people think that you have this magic power to just change everything on your own, that's not always the case, right? And so, but this is one of those times where you do come to us with good news. It's a great partnership between residents of our community and the county, and holding some of these parcels or parts of them for open space and conservation. And that is really ha, that's a great thing when people are willing to do that. And so, just a special thanks to you and the entire assessor's office. You guys work really, really hard on everybody's behalf, and so we're grateful for you. With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number 11, our board calendar and reports. Commissioner Madoff, if you get us started, Commissioner Trask, and then I'll finish up.
Last couple of weeks, we had special meetings regarding the sewer. I've met with different candidates for different reasons. Mason Transit Authority Special Meeting, North Mason Community Voice had a town hall candidate forum where they did a round robin or a speed dating, which was, I first saw that at League Women Voters. I think it's pretty effective. Olympic Regional Cleaner Authority, met with Kelly in regards to visiting the location out there at the fire station in Belfair. Attended a tip cap open house that they had along with Commissioner Trask. They also had a barbecue afterwards. The tip kept it, and I think it was a different organization, but anytime you have Burke hot dogs and homemade potato salad, I'm happy. I just love homemade potato salad. Allen Days was a big, big, big success, so as was the Shelton Expo. Man, there's a lot of people that are coming back to life out here in our community, guys. It's nice to see them out and about. We had briefings. Coming up here, we have a retreat after this, Mason Transit Authority. We meet with Risk Pool for several days, North Mason Chamber of Commerce, Mason County Housing Authority, Lydia Hasel Retirement, Left Board, and Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, bringing us back again to start all over.
All right. Yep. We all stay pretty busy, don't we? So, we do have the Commissioner Retreat this afternoon. We also have Mason Transit Authority. I have an LTAC meeting, which is the lodging techs meeting, Public Works Board meeting, and Happy birthday, Will Johnson, by the way. And then, let's see, we have county briefings coming up, WASAC Virtual Assemblies, there's a Mason County GOP meeting, we have a homelessness task force meeting, Community Action Council meeting, Board of Health meeting, I believe, is also on Tuesday, the 26th. WASAC Social Equity Work Group meeting, Community Action Council meeting, Public Works Board meeting, ladies retirement. I get to go on a boat ride with some members of the Turning Point Board, so pretty excited about that one. My son-in-law's birthday's coming up. I have two son-in-laws. Both of them are Michael Jason. That's confusing. And then, we're back here for briefings on Monday, and then more WASAC Virtual Assembly. And also want to remind people to get out and vote.
Thank you. So, as was mentioned, we have a, our Commissioner Retreat briefings following this meeting. Sorry, Mark, we're already a little bit off, off schedule. I know you'll make up the time. As well as the Mason Transit meeting. I also have a YMCA board meeting at noon. I have a phone call with Scott Brew from the Hood Canal Coordinating Council, as well as our Hood Canal Coordinating Council Board meeting. I have a meeting with the Pigeon Sound Partnership, and then the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization Governance Board meeting, meeting with Mayor Anisco and Deputy Mayor Schmidt. Briefings again. Briefings again next Monday, followed by a meeting with constituents about short-term and vacation rental regulations, as well as the Board of Health meeting and a meeting out in the Skokomish Valley regarding the Conservation District Army Corps projects, county projects out there as well. Then have Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting, plan to be, try to make Lydia's retirement party, her makeup retirement party. Good for her for being willing to come in two months after she's retired to, to be recognized. And then also have a meeting at MaceCom and then I'll be out with some family obligations at the end of next week as well. And then back Monday for briefings and my staff check in with the BHASO. With that, having reached the end of our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the motion carries. We adjourned.